Yes.
Yeah, yeah. So you can like, you can spread yourself out.
Call me to order. Stand for the collective leaders.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. As we always announce, we are recording the meeting. It is not being livestreamed, but we will upload it to our City of Lunapure YouTube channel after the meeting. And we will upload it uncut in its entirety. That's for a roll call.
Oz Looper.
Here.
Katuski.
Here.
Wong.
Here.
Needing.
Here.
Barry.
Here.
Wakeman is absent, excused. Mayor Gardner.
Here.
Attorney Goldsmith.
Here.
Thank you very much. Moving along here with the first two items on the agenda, the minutes of October 23rd and approval of tonight's agenda. Do I have a motion?
I propose a motion to approve the consent agenda items A through B as presented within the reading.
Support.
We have a motion. We have multiple support. I'll ask Charlie to let Charlie decide that one. Any discussion on that? Call in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none. Motion carried. Bills of warrants? Do I have a motion?
I propose a motion to approve bills of warrant number 14245, paid in the amount of $133,845.47, and bills warrant number 14246 unpaid in the amount of $31,598.45 and visa in the amount of $2,415.87 as presented within the reading. Support.
I have a motion. We have support. Any discussion on that? That's probably why we don't buy a police car very often because that's in there. Let's do a roll call vote.
Barry.
Yes.
Needing.
Yes.
Oz Looper.
Yes.
Katuski.
Yes.
Wong.
Yes.
Mayor Gardner.
Yes. Thank you very much. Motion carried. We don't have anything in presentation. We will have a little bit in new business. But nothing right now. Moving on to the mayor's report. On November 8th, we hosted the parade in honor of our veterans. We attract people with our Freedom Festival, celebrating our nation's independence, but the veterans are the ones who have been backing that up that declaration for almost 250 years now. Thank you to all our veterans who have served our country. And the ones who are here tonight, thank you for the ones who aren't. We just thank all the veterans who who served our country. Hosting Monroe County's best Veterans Day Parade takes a tremendous amount of work, and we thank all those who stepped up and committed countless hours to plan, coordinate, and to pull off this year's parade and ceremony. In my opinion, it's the most important ceremony we do. I know Chris Burchett, Jennifer Grothar, many, many others stepped up along with our American Legion Post 193, the Erie VFW. Many people involved in making this a success. And we thank you all for your commitment and your service to our country. Thank you, Megan Niner and Chris Burchett, and the entire team of volunteers, including Parks and Rec and some planning commissioners, for the trees, per the Consumers Energy Tree Planting Grant Program. I believe we have everything submitted for payment on that. Consumers Energy Forest Division paid for these trees. They're planted along the road as is required, but they are along the park system, Seventh Street Park and First Street Park. So we're really glad to get those trees in where in this type of tree that's very manageable, a lot more sustainable. Thank you for everybody that worked so hard, including the some of the neighbors and residents who put a shovel in the ground and did the hard work to get those trees planted, and our DPW for hauling them and picking them up. SEMCOG has funds available for Pacer, which is pavement, surface evaluation, and rating. It's a tool to measure your road surface quality and quantify the data. Ours are bad. We know it. And engineers want to see numbers, so we're going to find out how that is. I did submit a request for that funding. The data helps us when we apply for future road finding to show exactly what our condition of our roads is. So they're not just taking our word for it, but we have numbers to show. It will be helped. I did apply for the funding. We'll see what happens. I haven't heard anything back yet. Well, also, we've also been in talks with a couple of engineering firms to quote the services we need to put together a repaving project, probably starting with Ganya Road. We tried for the category B funding. We were denied that. That road is probably the most doable, the most used, and in the worst shape. When you combine all those things, that will be a good start for paving some of our streets. I still would love to do Harold Drive. We're going to try to do some prep work, you know, maybe some engineering work for that for a future project, but we really don't have the money right now for that. But we will prepare because it's it's bad. We know it needs to be redone. We'll start with what we can manage and move from there. We're actively searching for a new city treasurer. Kelly has accepted a position with a multinational company, so December 4th will be her last day. She's really done an exceptional job, learning very quickly. She's very talented, obviously, and a company scooped in and picked her up and made her a very, very lucrative offer that we can't match. So I'm very excited for her and this new opportunity that she has, but it puts us in a place where we need to hire a treasurer and train immediately. We have the job posted. I'd like to expand that post through our, we need some help with that. If we can get that.
When was the job posted?
We posted on our website and in the library and.
Monday.
Monday?
Yeah.
How long ago did she turn in her notice? Just out of curiosity.
The week before that.
Thursday.
Yeah.
Okay.
So we, you know, I wanted to make sure that. She gave us a heads up, but it was not formally offered to her. So once it was formally offered, then we we went to work on it. Good news report just over this afternoon. We did have an experienced treasurer in the county. It's now in a part-time position, but wants to go full-time. So that's the most hopeful contact we've had so far.
Do we have a deadline for applying?
We have to. We have to make a decision. It takes two to three weeks to get everything, the authorizations transferred to the bank. It's going to be a very, very tight deadline.
Okay, because I can get it posted tomorrow, but I usually like to put a deadline for applications.
By the end of the week. It's going to be that short.
December 1st.
Okay.
Yeah. So we will need to fill that position immediately. Dee has been very gracious to help us out. She's gone above and beyond her position now. She's not able to continue that. So we really need to fill this position with somebody with experience. That's all I have. Any questions? Moving on. We don't have a, to the department reports, we don't have a police report tonight. Fire report is included in the packet. Another busy month there. Very successful building report from their building department. Lots of activity in the city, both residential and commercial. It's good to see that, especially when it's starting to be consistent. We're seeing a lot of development inland appear. Committee reports, DDA minutes and special meeting minutes were included in the packet. Anything to add? Dewey?
Nothing to add.
It's great work in the beach area with the concrete work. It's, it looks fantastic. Well, we still have a little bit to do with some fencing and some, maybe some landscaping, but it's looking really good there. And the DDA really has a plan for that downtown area, and this is really just the start. I don't have anything to report from flood. Parks and Rec meeting minutes were included. Parks and Rec committee's really got it going on. They're really involved, really getting things done. So hats off to them. Anything to add, Diana?
Well, we're going to slow down for winter.
Good.
We're not having a meeting in December, so our next meeting will be January 13th, 7:00 PM at the library. That'll be our planning for the year, so anybody that wants to come will get up and moving again in January. The bench restoration's held off till spring now. The trees, as you said, are planted, thanks to everyone that helped. Tree lighting, December 6th, and Parks and Rec is providing goodie bags for the children. Library is collecting hats and gloves again for that night to give away. The volleyball net was stored for winter, thanks to DPW and our pickleball nets in, but we decided to wait till spring to put that up.
Oh, good. Thank you. I told you, they're busy. They've got it going on. Thank you. We really appreciate that, that report and all that you guys are doing. Old business, lighthouse upgrades. I just need to get kind of an estimate with our plumber or what what it's going to take as probably a contingency to the quoted prices we have. We'll put something together. We do have a new cleaner starting this week, actually this weekend, but somebody else is taking on that responsibility, which is good, a local resident. Blight Committee.
Are they going to be doing Water Tower Park as well?
Yes. Same person. And we will have to revisit our contract with Water Tower Park. There's other things we want, like maximum capacity, some bounce house things we talked about. We need to put that into the, into the contract. And we, we don't pay very well for cleaning either, so we may have to up that just a little bit. Charlie is working on it and has a, has a draft version ready, and that'll come up on Council Action soon. Blight Committee, we did not appoint a chair. I would like someone from council to be the chair of that committee. If I don't get volunteers, I will try to appoint somebody. I'm not going to put anybody on the spot tonight, but everybody, give it some thought. If nobody wants to step up right now, we will talk during the weekend and come up with somebody for that position. The part-time city administrator position, we have our subcommittee working on that. The treasurer situation does, it doesn't put it on hold, but it takes priority over that. We are doing, still looking and doing them both concurrently, but we are looking for the treasurer position and that will kind of could play into what kind of qualifications we're looking for. Anything on that? I know Neil's not here, but I know Dewey, you met and with Connie and.
Yeah, so we reached out to, what, about 15 like municipalities connected through the Michigan Municipal League. We've gotten some responses back, at least I've gotten some responses back from like cities on how they organize, what the origin story of their roles were and what their duties are, duties, responsibilities, and priorities are in similar communities. So we're hoping that that helps us flesh out and illustrate a better vision of what, what like communities have been, have been faced with, as well as allows us some insight into maybe some of the items that we, that we haven't considered.
Yep, and our charter allows us to establish that position as needed. There is an ordinance for that, and we may visit that to, if there are any changes needed to that, to best suit our needs.
Yeah, and we discuss that. Likely some sort of change to that ordinance will be necessary, so.
Okay, thank you. An important position in our city. Moving on to new business. The ordinance for the fire code adoption, we had the first reading or the introduction at last meeting. We will be voting on that. It's terms are really not negotiable. It's a, it's a federal standard. Whether we want to adopt it is what our choice is tonight, and it's a, it's a very good code. Our Blight ordinance. I know Counselor, Counselor Wakeman had a few questions on it. They discussed it a little bit. I am recommending we move forward considering his, his comments. And rather than go back to the start and rewriting it, we're this far. I recommend moving on, adopting that. We can look at it. If we think we need to do changes, we can do an amendment, but I'd like to get that on the table for, to vote on it tonight. The garage sale ordinance, our first reading. Now, our attorney is here, and he did have a chance to look that over briefly. If there's anything you see that, any red flags or anything on that?
No, I don't think so. I think you modeled it after another municipal ordinance. Was it Brownstown?
There was a couple of them.
A couple of them, so I looked at it quickly, and the one distinguishing factor is it applies to residentially zoned areas, residential garage sales. So any type of sale activity that occurs in our mixed use or commercial areas, this wouldn't, it doesn't allow a garage sale, I should say, in those areas. And that would be, that would be governed by our zoning ordinance. And so, for instance, if you have a commercial or mixed use area and you want to conduct sales, you have to go through the standard procedure of submitting a site plan for approval through planning. So it looks, it looked fine to me. I think the objective is, is to keep garage sales manageable within the city, regulate them in terms of, without charging your residents a permit fee, regulate them in terms of how many times any one property owner can have a garage sale within any one calendar year, et cetera. So I don't, I don't have any comments other than that.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Yeah, it's just, it's very accommodating, I think, for having garage sales. Yeah, it puts a little bit, a few control protections in place from something getting out of hand. Dakota Needing to the Parks and Rec Committee. That's probably the best application letter I have ever seen. Very talented. I've been at some of the meetings with her. She's really a go-getter. Really, really pleased with that application, so I'm definitely prepared to nominate Dakota for that. C3 Industries, the signage approval. As promised, if somebody wants to speak on that, there's a few changes. You're welcome to come on up. You, we've talked a little bit about it. There's a couple of changes from what's shown in the diagram there. It's actually, it's a correction.
I think without reviewing the, do you want to review the reasons behind the need?
That would be good.
Yeah, so, yeah, with the, the site being tucked back and our access being somewhat roundabout, you know, accessed off of Evans Drive, you know, from Lunapure, just feel there's, if we could have a presence, a signage presence out on Lunapure Road, really helps get people off and not inadvertently going through Gardner's Restaurant to get to, you know, to get around there and just keep traffic the wayfinding, you know, for the potential customers or the traffic that we're trying to direct to our site. Just feel that need is there. It does seem to be there's a precedent with other signs of a similar nature, even on that, at that intersection. So that's where the, you know, where the idea came to, to put a sign out there. And as far as the, we had originally submitted it thinking, you know, we wanted to light it and using solar on that as an option. That seemed like the solution we came up with was pretty unwieldy. So we backed off, and that's what the change was, really the same sign, but without the, the solar power aspect. But we will do, we're wanting to do, you know, something that's reflective so that at night there, you know, it is visible to light a car traffic. So that's really the only distinction in the change. Sign, the size of the sign as presented is what we're looking for.
Okay, and because it's in the right-of-way, that's why it takes council, council approval? One thing you know to say, the drawing made it look like it was in Gander's front yard there. It's not there. It's on the east side of the road.
Yeah, we actually had our surveyor come back out to verify where their property line and, you know, and we'll have it staked so that we're not on, we're in the right-of-way versus on Gander's property.
Yeah, it's the.
So right by the dynamic sign?
Yes, it's similar. I think we're closer to Lunapure.
Actually, the, the dynamic sign is, is
On the, on the east side?
Yeah, it's on the west side of the road where the, right on Gander's property. And your sign, as I understand it, would be on the east side of?
No, on the, it would be on the west side, right along the property line.
Okay, but in the, in the right-of-way.
In the right-of-way.
Okay.
Yeah, we didn't figure we had rights to put it on Gander's property.
In the vicinity of the dynamic sign.
Yeah, and it's, it, yeah, when you, dude, the site plan is included. It's, you know, it's a fairly small drawing, but tried to clarify that it is kind of up against the property line. And I think to mention it, like five feet off of where the sidewalk was there.
Is it safe to assume that this sign has about roughly the same setbacks as the sign for Green Labs that we allowed?
It, yes, the right-of-way is the same on, on both of those.
Just making sure.
Yep, good question.
Mr. Mayor, does the placement, does anybody look at site distance dynamics regarding the placement of this sign since it's in the road right-of-way? Does it, will it create a traffic site distance problem? I'm just asking. I don't know.
I believe it's, it's set back far enough that from what I looked at, it's a good, it's a good point. We don't want to limit the sight of people pulling out of Evans Drive.
Yeah, it's, I would say yes, and then, and it's limited to four foot.
It's south of the sidewalk, correct?
Yeah.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, that's, okay. I just, when visiting my mother-in-law at Aspen Grove and pulling out onto Secor Road, there's some signs along there on Secor Road that block your view. And if you look to the north, you can't see traffic. To the south, just made me think of this. I don't want to create a problem like that where we could have traffic accidents because of that. But I just looked at the photograph. It doesn't seem to be the case.
Okay. All right, thank you. Good question.
Yeah, and with the limited sign, the size of it, there's, you know, very small adjustments. I would think you could work around it, too. It is, it's common for site triangles to be maintained.
Okay. Anybody have questions? Thank you very much. Okay, thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
SBH AA Retreat and the discussion on the rental rate request for Water Tower Park. I'm glad our attorney is here to clarify some things. I know that we, as a municipality, we're, we're not allowed to donate to a charity. We have to be careful about that. We have to consider. I think we can negotiate a special rate because they're, they're doing multiple days, but we have to keep that in, in line, that that has to be available to the general public if we set that precedence, precedence. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct. And it's governed by Michigan Department of Treasury rules and regulations. And you're, you're right, we need to be, that's another fact, that we can't donate taxpayer funds that fall outside of those regulations.
Okay, and that includes assets or use of facilities and things like that? It's, you want to really help somebody sometimes, and we get put in a position where it's good for the community, but we're not allowed to do it per state law. It's always very awkward.
If you allow use of, of public property for one organization, it opens it up as a public forum, and it can be used by other organizations as well, public or private. So you just need to be aware of that.
Okay.
Didn't we let somebody rent for just the cost of cleaning before?
We, we did that before. This would be a little bit different because they're actually, I think, asking for three days, is it?
Yes, they're asking three days.
What kind of a discount are they asking for, out of curiosity? Because in this letter, I mean, our rates for non-residents for three days is only $510. So what kind of a discount are they asking for?
Well, if you look at the letter, they don't specify.
Right.
Right.
Okay.
I think they're looking for what council deems reasonable. So they, they didn't come right out and say, we want it for this much. They said, they asked, can you do anything? I said, well, it definitely has to be approved by council. And so they submitted a proposal, and they did not put in there. So we can come up with that. I think maybe a rental as, as something that we want to do, but keep in mind that we have to do that for anybody that asks. We can't make it cheaper for a nonprofit and then charge everybody else more, correct?
That's right. I, I think you should, this will be an unpopular statement maybe, but I think you should remain consistent, and I think you should keep the rental rate the same for everyone.
$510 for three days is not a lot of money.
No, it's not.
And you can't even get a hotel.
And as it says on here, they go around the country every year to a different place.
Rhode Island, Jersey Shore, they're not getting $510 for three, for three days to any of these places. And it says retreat on here.
Yeah.
So does that mean they're going to be staying here? Or are they going up to the hotel?
It says they'll be staying locally.
Yeah, I, I don't know what hotel they'll be staying in.
I know what retreats.
Yeah, it may be the, if you're in, it may be another local hotel.
If we remain true to our policy and remain consistent, I think that's the best practice.
Yep.
I agree.
They will be using it for three days straight, so we may be able to do something on the, of the cleaning because we don't need to do a complete cleaning every single day. So we will save a little bit of money there where we're not going to pay our cleaner every day to come in here, and they, they can sweep up and keep, keep it, and then we can come in and do the, do the cleaning afterwards. I think that may be reasonable.
Yeah, but our fees are not separated, like, I mean, they, everybody pays a deposit for cleaning and the key, refundable deposit, but we, it's not like it's stated in our contract that this is how much for the tenancy and this is the cleaning fee, so.
Yeah, it was, yeah, it was in the formula that we came up with, but you're right.
I think consistency is key. It's locked together.
Maybe worth, maybe worth doing. Any other questions or discussion on that? That's a good, good discussion.
What are the hours? Do you know? Are they going to be here like from sunup to sundown? Does it say? Because I'm not seeing it. Okay, I'll share.
So they said the first day they're here, Thursday, they'll start late. Friday, they want to be here all day, starting at nine o'clock. Saturday, I don't know how long they're going to be here.
Because, I mean, granted, it's probably going to be adults, but these are school nights.
Well, they have to abide by the noise ordinance and all that, too.
Yeah, I don't, being an AA group, I don't expect a wild party. And we did check, you brought up a good point. We did check.
But still, it is a school night.
Yeah, we did, we did check with the, the senior group, and they said they can, they could work around that, that Friday schedule. It's not a problem.
Oh, for lunch?
Yeah, for the lunch group. Okay, any, any more discussion on that? Move on to community input. If you would like to address council, we welcome you to do that at this point. We just ask that you state your name and what city you live in. And we'd love to hear your comments.
Steve Nemeth, 4363 South Second Street, Luna Pier, Michigan. The mayor and I have been going back and forth on this thing about the city ordinances, the lack of enforcement. And I've tried to work with him and the police chief, but that doesn't seem to work. So 2021, I made 43 calls for ordinance violations. Drinking, dogs on the beach, after hours in the, on the beach, those types of things. And I filed a FOIA request and I got a record back, no records. 2022, I made 23 calls. I filed a FOIA request, no records, nothing, no one was cited. 2023, I made 27 calls. There's nobody was cited for an ordinance violation. 2024, 26 calls, nobody was cited. And this year, I only made 15 calls because I think I'm getting tired of calling. But again, I got no calls from, nobody got cited on that. So. You know, we don't have any after hours. Used to have somebody work till four. We don't have anybody that even works till midnight. And the mayor says you can call the sheriff's department. So what I did is I did a FOIA request on the sheriff's department for May 24th, 2024, to get their run sheet. The sheriff's department is 800, 680 square miles and they service 155,000 residents. So I got their log sheet for that. In a 24-hour period, they had 122 calls. So if you call them for someone on, making noise on the beach or smoking marijuana or lighting off the fireworks like they did after the Fourth of July, I don't know if anybody was here for that, for seven days, they were lighting off the fireworks. And you can't call the sheriff for that because they're going to put it on a priority list and that's going to be down on their run sheet. So that's not a good idea, calling the sheriff's department unless you got like a serious crime. So I had one of those officers, you know, and they said, you want to come to your house? Sure. So I, he comes to my house and I introduce myself. He says, I said, oh, you must be a new guy. He goes, no, I've been here four years. I said, you've been here four years? I says, really? He goes, yeah, he's, I work on the traffic bureau. So I was like, okay, traffic bureau. Well, that's interesting. The city is like 1.69 square miles and they have like 1,300 residents and we have a traffic bureau. So he's right, we do have a traffic bureau because when I filed my FOIA request in 2021, they didn't want to give me anything. They gave me 32 pages of traffic citations that he had written, you know, five over on Harold Drive. So that, you know, it's just, and some of the other calls for service. So let's see here. So July 16th was a Sunday, 2023, we had about 200 people on the beach. We hadn't seen police officers in days. So my wife says, I can't believe there's no one, no one coming by or anything. So I ride my bike to the station and I see a police car back then. I thought, okay. So I will go up and touch the grill to see if it's warm. Now, this is in the summertime. So the car's back then. I thought, well, maybe nobody's on duty. I didn't call. So then I went back two hours later, the car's still there. So I touched the grill, okay? It's still cold. So I knock on the door, officer comes to the door, says, what do you want? I says, well, is, is Sergeant Price here? And I figured he probably wasn't working. And he said, no. I said, okay, thank you. And I left. So you got a guy that was at the station probably for over two hours and never even came out. Never even came out. Then I placed another call. I placed another call on June 30th for service. And I always ask the dispatch, are they busy? They'll say yes or no. And if they're busy, I just disregard the call. And they said, no, they're not busy. So I sent them on a call, a couple of dogs running on the beach. So after an hour, nobody showed up. So I called back. I said, did you redirect the officer to a more important call? He says, no. I said, okay. So I file a FOIA request for the officer's logs for June 30th, the dog call, and July 16th for the time I went to the station and saw the patrol cars sitting there. So on my FOIA request.
I got to ask you to wrap it up. That was a five minute.
All right, well, I'll just finish this real quick here. They have no records for the, for those logs, for those dates. A month later, the chief came by and said, hey, I'm sorry, but I saw that FOIA thing and, you know, we just happened to accidentally lose those two logs. I said, okay. I says, yeah, thanks. So I could go on for probably two hours, but I don't know what about your ordinance, Amanda, but you can forget passing any more stricter ordinances and you can forget passing the, the yard sale thing because there's not going to be anybody enforcing anything.
Thank you.
Thank you. The floor is open. Anybody'd like to comment?
Be quick.
All right.
Scott Roberts, Troy, Michigan. I'm the owner of 10552 Evans Drive. I'm just here to ask for your support on the sign ordinance, or not that ordinance, the new sign request. You know, it's a little confusing, Evans Drive, when I first pulled in, the first time I went to the property. About a year and a half ago, I pulled into Gander's like a lot of people do and got confused. Figured it out eventually. I actually did that one more time. And, you know, I think signage would help, I think with traffic flow. You know, there's going to be a lot of people who've made the mistake I did. And I know their actually, their attorney as well, C3's attorney did the exact same thing, even though I told them about it. So, you know, I think it's going to be helpful for, for everyone and for the traffic flow. And then, you know, there is precedent. I know, you know, I was here at the meeting where you granted the, the Green Lab sign variance. So I just kind of ask that you do the same for us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I always enjoy your wisdom.
The floor is open. Once, twice. Okay, I'll close the public input portion of the meeting, move on to council action. We have ordinance 248 fire code adoption. Do I have a motion?
I propose a motion to approve ordinance 248 fire code adoption of the 2024 addition of the International Fire Code, second reading as presented.
Support.
Waiving the reading, sorry.
All right. We have a motion. We have support with waiving the reading. Good with that? Any discussion on that? Do a roll call vote?
Juan.
Yes.
Harry.
Yes.
Eden.
Yes.
Kacholsky.
Yes.
Boszlooper.
Yes.
Your gardener.
Yes. Thank you very much. Motion carried. Ordinance 250, blight ordinance.
Do you have a list of the concerns that Councilman Wakeman had?
I don't have it with me.
I do.
All right, okay.
I can address it.
All right, thank you, Phil.
So Neil said, after the last meeting where you first considered adoption, the first reading of the blight ordinance. The first comment that Neil sent to me, for the preamble of the ordinance, he suggested including this language. This ordinance also supports the city's strategic objective to promote tourism and preserve the overall visual appeal, recreational quality of Luna Pier's Lake Erie shoreline and water-centric community character. So that he proposed that language to be added to the first paragraph of the ordinance. So I would have no objection to that if the board felt that they wanted to add that language into the, the standard language to protect the health, safety and general, general welfare of the persons and property within the city of Luna Pier. That was his first suggestion. Second suggestion, it was relates to blight in non-residential areas, section two. And he suggested that perhaps this phrase could be added, an opaque fence wall or structure consistent with zoning height, height requirements. So if you're in a non-residentially zoned area, you're still subject to the blight ordinance. However, if there is storage, well, let me just read it and that way we'll, I'm not going to misquote anything. So blight in areas zoned other than residential. In area, in any area zoned other than residential by the city of Luna Pier zoning ordinance, the existence of blight or blighting factors prohibited in any area zoned for residential purposes are strictly prohibited unless such uses of property are incidental to and necessary for the carrying on of any business or occupation lawfully being conducted upon the premises involved. Any use which is claimed to be incidental and necessary for carrying on any business or occupation lawfully upon the premises shall be subject to the containment of the blight or blighting factors in as small an area as is reasonably required by the business or occupation. And it shall be required that such blight or blighting factors shall be completely shielded from the view of the general public, such that the blight or blighting factors shall be fully contained within a building or opaque fenced or approved screened area. So Neil's suggestion was an opaque fence wall or structure consistent with zoning height requirements. So that would be added into the end of that. That was his suggestion. His next suggestion pertain to unused and/or out-of-use equipment. His thought was such equipment is deemed abandoned if visible outdoors and unused for 90-plus days. I probably wouldn't put abandoned, but would be deemed a blight, be deemed blight or a blighting factor if visible outdoors and unused for 90-plus days. That, I think that's addressed in other sections of the ordinance, but that was his suggestion. Enforcement and cost recovery. One of the things that was important to me in this ordinance is that some units of government will adopt the blight ordinance and make it a municipal civil infraction, which you proposed to do here, and that's good. But they, they forget about making, which we didn't do, it's in here. They sometimes forget about giving an alternate type of remedy, which you have here. And that alternate remedy is that any blighting factors are considered a per se violation and meaning that you can seek the equitable jurisdiction of the circuit court. So if you have a severe blighting factor and you issue several municipal civil infractions and the person just ignores it and doesn't pay, we can take them to circuit court. We can get a judgment against them. That judgment, that judgment allows you, if they don't clean it up within a certain specified period of time specified by the court, it allows you to enter on the property or your agent to enter on the property, remove the blight, the blighting factors and charge it to the property owner. If they don't pay for it within a certain specified time specified by the court, then the city can pay for it and, and charge it against the property owner by placing it on the tax roll. The next tax cycle that rolls around, they have to pay. So that, that is available to you. What Neil wanted to do was basically the same thing for a municipal civil infraction. We don't have that flexibility because we don't meet the population threshold. So MCL 117.42 that, that Neil referenced, although a great idea. We just don't have, we don't have enough population in the city to have a municipal civil infraction bureau and therefore that wouldn't apply. And then he addressed garage sales, but I think that is, if you adopt the, the ordinance relative to garage sales, that takes care of that. So it wouldn't apply. So those were his comments.
Okay. And my first, my first question is, we don't have to go through and do another reading at a separate meeting. We could amend it? I'm asking, can we amend, make a couple of changes and then pass it with the changes?
Yes, yeah, you can do that because you've already, you've put it out for review. You've looked at it once. Technically, a general code ordinance or police powers ordinance does not require two readings by law, by Michigan law. But our charter does require it. And so it's, it's definitely required in a zoning ordinance, a tax amendment to a zoning ordinance. But so this is your second reading. If you want to make those minor adjustments as suggested by Councilman Wakeman, I have no issue with it. I, I think it actually improves it a little bit.
Okay, is there, going back to the, you mentioned the 90-day portion, is that going to be a problem? And is it enforceable?
I guess I, I would, I like everything that he's stated. I probably wouldn't put the 90 days in because then you have people counting days and there could be, there could be a controversy over that. If it's blight, it's blight. If it's there today, it's blight and you don't have to wait 90 days. And each day it's there is another violation. Each, each continuation of a blight factor is a second violation. The next day is another violation. So I wouldn't let, that, that's more limiting to the city. So I don't think I would put that in there.
All right. Any, any questions on it?
Questions? No comments? I, I do like the amendments proposed by Councilor Wakeman.
The first two?
Yes, correct. Thank you.
Oh, there it was.
But yes.
The first two, okay.
Yeah, the preamble and then the, an opaque fence wall or structure consistent with zoning height requirements. I think that's a, I think that's a very good addition. And really the preamble too, because that's, that's what the, a large part of what the city of Luna Pier is about. You're, you're a lakefront community and you want to promote that. And you've tried very hard over the years to promote that. And blight doesn't help that.
All right.
Great.
So would like, somebody like to propose?
I propose a motion to approve ordinance 250 blight ordinance with the changes of language to paragraph one per Neil Wakeman's request and changes to the opaque fence buildings per Neil Wakeman's language for the second reading as presented, waiving the reading.
Support.
Okay, very good.
Give that to Charlie.
Technology is a wonderful thing. We have a motion. We have support. Any discussion?
Just a request from the attorney to help Charlie with the.
I'm going to, when I get in the morning, I'll make those changes. I'll redline it, shoot it over to Charlie and both a redlined version and a cleaned version so we can see what we did.
Thank you.
That's consistent with this motion.
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much. There's no other discussion? We'll do a roll call vote.
Can somebody second?
I did.
Yep, yep.
Juan.
Yes.
Harry.
Yes.
Eden.
Yes.
Kacholsky.
Yes.
Boszlooper.
Yes.
Your gardener.
Yes. Thank you very much. Motion carried. Thank you, Councilor Wakeman, for the edits. Garage sale ordinance?
I propose a motion to deny ordinance 249 garage sale ordinance, first reading as presented, waiving the reading.
Support.
We have a motion. We have support. Any discussion?
Just a question.
Yeah.
The hesitance on the garage sale ordinance, could you elaborate?
Um, well, I mean, if you want my honest opinion, I feel like this garage sale ordinance is being used as a direct tool against one specific family and one piece of property. And I don't think that that's necessarily right. There's been a reluctance with the planning commission to find a feasible plan with what they're wanting to do out there. And I do not think that blocking them at every avenue that they come across with is the proper way to do it. There could be agreements made if people would work together. There could be agreements made if people would work together and do their due diligence instead of just shooting everything down, and I don't think that limiting every resident in the city as a result of trying to block one person is fair.
Well said.
I will say, there is a very simple, legal, tried and true avenue that if you're talking about the property on the corner of Lakeside...
I think we all know.
Yes, he has a very well-defined process, and he doesn't wanna do it that way. It's an approved use, he just won't apply and submit a site plan.
Well, I've seen multiple site plans, and I've seen multiple things that, you know, oh, Mike, we need you to do this, this isn't right, we need you to take care of this, and he comes back with the info and he's just shot down again. And it seems to be a repetitive thing, and I'm starting to wonder if it's a personal issue. So I don't agree with the garage sale ordinance as a way to limit one person that's been trying to do something. And, you know, furthermore, they're selling sunscreen and pop and pool floaties to beachgoers who actually need this stuff. They're the only ones who are actually applying anything to business-wise for the people who come and frequent our beach, who would otherwise spend no money other than parking.
Right, and he has a mechanism for that, he's zoned for that. All he has to do is submit a site plan, and he did not.
But they try.
He never submitted a site plan.
Well, then we don't need this to control him and limit everybody else in the city as a result, because if people wanna have a garage sale in their own garage or on their own property, they should be entitled to do so without getting someone's permission.
I think this is very conducive to that. It doesn't restrict anybody. I can't think of any...
But in the ordinance, it does constrict people because it does say that...let me see, let me find it. Nope, that's blight, because it does say you're only allowed so many days. I think it was sixteen days a total.
For garage sales.
Three garage sales, twelve days. So it is restricting.
And this is not inclusive of Freedom Fest weekend. It said Freedom Fest weekend as an exception to this, which is when most people have their garage sales anyways. And furthermore, who is gonna go and enforce that and give somebody a fine for having a garage sale?
Like Paul said, we can't get a lot of enforcement anyways.
So I stand on my motion.
I've lived here since 1964, barring a brief interruption when I got married, but a couple of years there, but I can't think of any time somebody tried to have a garage sale for more than twelve days.
Well, we've made it sixty years without limiting garage sales in the city. I think that that's very low-hanging fruit, and I think that we would be better pointing our efforts somewhere else.
Just to add, Mayor Gardner, could you please share the avenue that needs to be exercised for the sale of...
I will turn that over to our attorney, 'cause we're here, he's here on the...
For the property in question?
For the property in question to be able to sell consumer goods on their property.
Yeah, I hope I'm not misspeaking, but I think the property is zoned properly for a particular use, but even when it's zone property, and I don't know if it requires a special land use permit or if it's a use by right, if it's a...let's just talk in generalities, if it's a use by right, then a site plan has to be submitted. And also, our ordinance would...our ordinances, plural, would require that the structure that's being used has to comply in certain respects for ADA access, things like that. So that would be the process. So a site plan would show the building, it would show where the goods would be sold, whether inside, outside, or both. It would show...and then our building department would have to go down there, Mike would have to go down there and determine whether there's compliance with ADA access requirements and so forth.
But you did just say too, that this ordinance is only covering residential areas. If that is a mixed-use district, this does not apply to that anyways. So we're restricting the whole city because of what somebody...we're restricting the whole residential areas of the city because of what somebody is doing in the mixed-use district. And that's not a solution to anything, and quite honestly, we got that ordinance on the table in how many months, when it took us a year and a half to get a blight ordinance, and I just think it's...I think it's silly.
I believe, Marilyn, help me out with this one, I believe too that just before the Fourth of July...Joy, you might be able to help me too, that they did come forward to the planning commission, I believe it was at our meeting, about selling this...their beach-going goods, if you will, and they were denied even just for that. And then Joy had given them permission to do part of the garage sale of that weekend.
Can I speak from the planning committee?
Sure.
Marilyn Foster, and I'm a member of the planning committee. The purpose of the garage sale was that it would abut and sort of go into the blight. Part of the reason was, and I actually was one of the people that was surprised we didn't have an ordinance of some sort, because the blight, people could just say, oh, that's my yard sale, I run a yard sale ninety days a year. And so we tried to bring it into that so that there was some teeth to it. And there are places down around where I am that it looks like a yard sale every single day, constantly. And so is that blight or is that a yard sale? And so there was looking for clarification on that.
Understood, but there was a spot in our blight ordinance that also applied to garage sales, and I think that we can cover that issue of whether it's a yard sale or whether it's blight, you know?
Yep.
Easily under that without enacting a whole separate ordinance that makes everybody have to go and ask for permission.
It wasn't just to...'cause I was actually trying to help Mike with this whole thing. But it should...why wouldn't it be a business, I guess, and that's a whole separate thing, but we tried to be fair about, like, if you're living in a house and your neighbor every weekend runs a yard sale, it'd be, you know, it can be annoying. And so like, how do you come up with something that's reasonable and fair?
So in all seriousness, has this been an ongoing issue in the city? Because I've never heard of any complaint ever of anybody having continual yard sales.
It hasn't been an ongoing issue, but it was an easier...it was enough materials that we could gather on a quicker basis than the whole blight thing. That's a whole different thing. This was information that other members of the planning committee did work on and looked like, what's in other areas, so that we didn't overdo it. We're not charging people, they don't have to give permits. But if your neighbor is doing it every single weekend and it's interrupting your life or your...who you're abutting or anything like that, so it's just like, it should be on the book so that you can distinguish between a yard sale and blight.
Well, I mean, that's understood, but if somebody's setting up on the weekend and they're taking everything down during the week, then it's a yard sale. If it's staying up twenty-four-seven for months at a time, clearly that would fall under blight. So that's something that we could clear up and specify more within the blight ordinance, and I don't call exactly what it says.
I guess I'm feeling like the time's already been spent.
Although, I'm gonna ask one question to our attorney. Current use of that, even though the zoning changed, is residential. So would this apply to that if the...if they're claiming that it's grandfathered in, is what the term?
So is it being used as a residential use?
That is a claim...the owner claims that.
Okay, so this is the way it breaks down. If you have a zoning change and you have a prior legal non-conforming use, so if the residential use was legal at the time of the zoning change, that is grandfathered and that can continue because it's a prior legal non-conforming use. So when it changed to mixed-use or mixed-use commercial or however it's identified in the zoning ordinance, that prior legal non-conforming residential use could continue, but it can't coexist with a commercial use that is allowed under the new...you have to pick, it's either one or the other. The owner of the property needs to make that election. If he wants to continue it as a residential use, he can, because it's prior legal non-conforming. If he wants to convert it into a commercial-type use that's allowed in the mixed-use district, he can, but he has to file a site plan and go through that process. Does that make sense?
Yep. Yes. Now, what I'm concerned about is in using it as a commercial business, doing resale there and calling it a garage sale.
But he's not using it as a commercial business though, because you guys keep shooting all his plans down.
No. That...any change of use, if the use changes from residential to commercial, you have to have a site plan, even if it's an existing commercial use, and you wanna change the commercial use, you have to submit a site plan, is correct.
That's what the zoning ordinance requires, yes.
Right, and I...
But currently, if he's not doing any commercial there, he can still grandfather back into residential, and he can have his garage sale.
Although, yeah.
If he...if it is strictly a residential, prior legal non-conforming residential use, if he or someone else is living there, or he's renting it, someone's living there, then the use is residential, so yes, a garage sale could be a use.
So like I said, they came forward with plans, the plans got denied, and now we're coming at them with a garage sale ordinance, so they can't do anything, and I think it's ridiculous. And now we're sitting here quibbling when we've got a motion and a support on the table.
All right, well, I guess we should vote then.
Yeah, well, one thing that I disagree with you on is that he submitted a site plan to do retail sales there. He never did that. He never submitted a site plan to do retail sales there, and he's allowed to do that. It's a principally permitted use.
Didn't somebody do that?
Then it could never go back to residential, correct? That wouldn't...residential would not be a principally permitted use at that point.
Once the use converts to a use that's allowed in zoning...by the zoning ordinance, in this case, a commercial-type use allowed under the mixed-use ordinance, once that use is converted, then you...it's a manifest intent to abandon the prior legal non-conforming use which was residential. So yes, you're right. If he converts it to a commercial use allowed under the...by right under the zoning ordinance, you can't go back to residential after that.
Correct, and he has told me several times that he wants to convert that to commercial use, and I'm all for it.
But he has to have an approved site plan, which he does not have at this time, so...
Right, but that's not on us, that's on him. It's a very simple process.
How many site plans has he submitted that he's gotten denial on? Because I know it's come before council a couple of times on recommendations from planning.
He'd go to the building office, but nothing ever was submitted to go to planning for a site plan for retail use there.
Can I get some clearer apologies?
He submitted drawings that were done by an architect or whatever, but that wasn't the site plan.
Okay.
And I talked to him about that. So he did submit drawings and impressive ones and whatever, but it didn't meet the guidelines of a site plan.
Okay.
I just wanna see clarification here. In terms of a site plan, what we're talking about, because we have seen presentations, multitudes of presentations per...from this individual, where is a site plan submitted to?
It goes to the building office first, and then it goes before the planning commission. It's scheduled before the planning commission.
So the path of application for a site plan and approval is through the building office? Then to the planning commission for approval, and then it goes to council, is that proper?
I have to check your ordinance. Some ordinances allow a site plan approval by the planning commission. I'm not sure on that.
I don't think it has to go to council for a principally permitted use.
I don't think so either. I think it's approved by planning, the site plan. First, it would go to Mike Dembski, he would look at it, and he would...then it'll go to planning, and he would make recommendations to planning, it complies in this respect, this respect, but it needs this, this, and this, or maybe it doesn't, maybe it complies in all respect. Planning takes a look at it, reviews it, and approves it. Or approves it with conditions, or sends it back and say, you gotta do this, this.
Is there a particular form to fill out with the site plan?
Yes.
And it's on the website?
I think so.
Yes, yes.
I think there's also a checklist, and I think it was the checklist that maybe wasn't fully completed.
I believe...I believe what he submitted...
I think that was...
He has submitted a lot of things.
Yeah, yeah, he has, I've seen the applications, I've seen that fees have been collected for these and...
But it's not all the checklist.
But, you know...
The right stuff. And I just wanna clarify, the...I'm the one who brought up the yard sale stuff a long time ago. It had nothing to do with Mike. It had everything to do with...I want him...we've talked to him individually, we'd love that for that person to get into business.
To succeed.
No one's trying to stop that whatsoever.
Right.
This was clearly just about people saying, oh, this is my yard sale stuff, when it's a blight thing.
We also decided to go towards the garage sale because we couldn't get any response on the blight, it had been so long, because we kept getting...that kept putting on the back of the table, and nothing was happening.
But they...
But now we have our blight, so...
Yeah.
But it wasn't...none of that was attached to that at all.
Any other comments?
Just one.
Go ahead.
So how many site plans have been submitted to the building office? Do you know, Jim?
There's no site plan to...no site plan request for converting it to commercial use.
You mean in general for Mike?
In general, it's hard to say because there are several things. I know there was one...one thing that was submitted, and I don't remember what it was about, but out of...one of the planning commissioners counted thirty-two items. Every one of them had to be met, and it met two of the thirty-two items, and said, there's no way. You can't pass this because it doesn't meet the requirement.
So the site plans did not meet the requirements that were set forth by the building?
I don't wanna misspeak, I don't...there were ideas submitted, but I don't know if that was formally a site plan that was submitted, but I could be wrong in that, I'd have to go back.
The application fee was collected, though, I'm sure.
Yeah, I would have to check on that. Before I speak publicly about it and say something that's wrong, I'd have to check on that. With the number of things that were submitted, I get confused, but I do know that a site plan for retail use, that was not submitted.
He also brought a lot of other plans, and one of them was to take over Northern Avenue, so that put it all the way back because that wasn't legal.
Yep.
Well, and as I understand it, there was different stages to the plan, but...
Things that occurred that he would come in, but it would be like...was a couple of times we've talked to him about Northern Avenue, you can't do that.
I have a suggestion. It may or may not go anywhere, but many units of government have pre-planning meetings, and if this gentleman wants to just focus in on this parcel, it's now, what, November thirteenth, this principal use would be during this spring, summertime months, early fall. So you could have a pre-planning meeting with him. I'd be happy to attend it if you wanted me to. Mike Dembski should be there, and we should try to narrow the scope of what he wants to do. Take small bites at the apple. So look at this property, and then just tell him, this is what your site...here's the checklist, this is what your site plan needs to show, and if you do these things, if you meet these standards, then your site plan will be approved.
Thank you, yes.
So I'll add this suggestion.
I agree, and if we're gonna take applications from people, then I think we need to show the due diligence to work with them and help them for growth and, you know, future prosperity of the city.
And that is...
Okay.
It's not everybody can do.
Right. Now, that brings us back to the motion on the table, it's a very, very good suggestion. I think we should follow that advice. Brings us back to the motion to deny... Uh, it brings us back to the motion to deny, uh, the first reading of the garage sale ordinance. Is there any more discussion on that? We'll do a roll call vote then.
Juan.
No.
Perry.
Yes.
Eden.
Yes.
Skatulski.
No.
Oz Looper.
Yes.
Mayor Gardner.
No.
That's really right.
That's a tie. It fails, correct?
It fails.
Fails, yes. That leaves.
Excuse me, just to define, it fails.
Yes.
Yes.
It means the, the motion.
It did not pass. Yes.
It is denied?
It is denied.
Okay.
Well, it means that the motion to deny to, uh, not have the first reading.
I was gonna say, it'll be on the next agenda. Don't worry, it'll come back.
It could be, it could be another vote to, if somebody make a motion.
The motion was to deny the first reading. Roll call vote was taken, three yes, three no, so the motion failed. So the motion to deny failed. So there's no action, no action with respect to the first reading. If someone wanted to make a motion to, uh, approve the first reading, um, they could because the first motion failed. You could do that. There's no reason to believe the second motion would pass.
You're right.
This will be a repeat of the strong reading.
But, but just to make the record clear for Charlie's benefit, the motion was to deny. It failed because it ended up in a three to three tie vote.
Okay.
So we, so we're, it, it'll come back the second time, and if you have the same output, the same result, the, this ordinance is not going to pass.
So just for clarification, this cannot be thrown on to next week's and the weeks after, and the days after.
It'll be there, you know, it'll be there.
Agenda.
Well, it could be.
Just because.
Yeah, see, it could be, it will be.
So I, I, I want to make a statement here.
It could come back before council.
Without going back to planning first?
Um, uh, yes.
Unless it's denied, correct?
Unless you directed planning, we don't like, would you re, would you, planning, would you reevaluate the situation? Here's what we don't like about the ordinance. Would you consider looking at it in this light? You could do that if you wanted to. Council could do that, send it back.
I think it'd be better just to include it in our blight ordinance.
We can amend the blight ordinance.
We already did.
We already passed it.
We already did.
And there was already a section in there.
But it doesn't, it's already, it's already in there about.
But what he said, you guys are doing a garage sale ordinance, so if you pass that, we won't need this here. But if we don't pass a garage sale ordinance, then we can use the section that's in the blight ordinance. I don't see why we have to have it listed twice for the same thing over something so silly that apparently.
That's okay. We'll see it on the next one anyway. It's not our decision.
Yep. Okay, we gotta move on.
So I, I want to make a statement here is that what I'm hearing at the table is that perhaps this was something that was put in place to curtail light, um, in the past. It seems like that situation has changed. I'm not very clear on what the objective of this document is, so. While I do think that there is a pathway forward for, um, uh, the, the family in question in the mixed district, I do think that it's also healthy to have a garage sale ordinance. I just don't know the objective of this particular ordinance. Now that we've highlighted the fact that it's curta, it, it was a means to curtail light. So I would like to send this back to the planning commission to better highlight what a garage sale ordinance would look like and the objective behind it.
Okay, we can do that.
I'll make that motion.
So if I don't, uh, okay.
And I'll support.
We got a motion to send this back to the planning commission. And then we have support for that, correct? Any discussion on that? Let's do a roll call vote.
Oz Looper.
Yeah.
Skatulski.
Yes.
Eden.
Yes.
Perry.
Yes.
Juan.
Yes.
Mayor Gardner.
Yes. Thank you very much. Motion carried. Appointment of Dakota and Eden to Parks and Rec.
I propose a motion to approve the appointment of Dakota and Eden to Parks and Rec Committee for a four-year term ending one fifteen, twenty twenty-nine, as recommended by Mayor Gardner.
Support.
We have a motion. We have support. Any discussion? That one we can do all in favor.
I think it's great that younger people are getting involved.
Makes me a pride model.
I agree.
Yep. Okay, yep, and I, I, I agree. She's a dynamic, individual.
And she has already been supportive and helpful in Parks and Rec.
Yep, she's going to go far. All, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Hearing none. Motion carried. Thank you, Dakota, for stepping up to that awesome committee. Indian Cities High Profile Cannabis Signage Approval Request.
I propose a motion to approve the C three Industries High Profile Cannabis Signage Approval Request as presented, waiving the reading.
Support.
We have a motion. We have support. Any discussion?
Just one question for the attorney. This does meet our signage ordinance per, uh, our zoning for signing. Is that correct? I did not see any difference to it. I understand that you cited concerns about the line of sight. It doesn't look like that to be the case.
Based on, based on the photograph that I just looked at, it doesn't appear to be. I just wanted to make sure that, that anyone pulling out of Evans Drive, their site would not in any way be impeded on Luna Pier Road. Um, and it doesn't appear that that would be the case. So, yeah, to answer your question, do yes, it complies.
That's all I had. Thank you.
Yep. I can add a little bit to that from Mike Dembski that, uh, it does, in his opinion, meet the, the ordinance requirement because of the total number, you know, total square footage. Um, the way it's written out, it's always, uh, a little convoluted when you try to, you know, cover several scenarios. But in his opinion, it does meet that. And the only reason we're voting on it is because it's on the city property, which is the right way.
Copy. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Let's do a roll call vote.
Juan.
Yes.
Perry.
Yes.
Eden.
Yes.
Skatulski.
Yes.
Oz Looper.
Yes.
Mayor Gardner.
Yes. Thank you very much. Motion carried. SBHAA Retreat.
I propose a motion to deny the SBHAA Retreat Discounted Rental Rate Request with SBHAA paying five hundred and ten dollars, the full amount, which is already reasonable, for a three-day rental on October fifteenth through seventeenth, twenty twenty-five, as presented, waiving the reading.
Support.
We have a motion. We have support. Any discussion? Do a roll call vote on that.
Oz Looper.
Yes.
Skatulski.
Yes.
Eden.
Yes.
Perry.
Yes.
Juan.
Yes.
Mayor Gardner.
Yes. Thank you very much. Motion carried. Council input and information, starting this side.
So, um, in, in light of the correspondence that we received from Steve, who also got up and spoke, um, I would like to discuss that, um, and, and see if there is not a feasible solution that we can find. Because, um, as has been brought up many times in the past, there has been a lot of talk, um, amongst ourselves up here at this table and amongst residents in the city, um, in regards to the police department. And, um, you, you guys know I fully support our police department and I fully support having one. I support them having the equipment that they need. Um, but at the same time, we are lacking in multiple different areas, and one of them does include, um, differential coverage or, and/or around the clock coverage because it is well-known around here what hours our police department is on staff. And while they may change it up occasionally as a response to an incident that happens, those incidences wouldn't be happen, if we, wouldn't be happening if we already had coverage that was changing. Um, yeah.
I would, I would, I would propose going to the chief, you know, you, um.
Well, we, we have, we have talked to the chief about this before. You, you said you've talked to him, other people have talked to him. I've talked to some of the officers. So maybe, um, we have a police advisory committee. Maybe we need to sit down and have some sort of a mediation and agreement on what kind of coverage and hours that the city needs based on the events that we've had in the past, how many years?
And that's where.
Because I tell you, I do go frequent the beach, and not everybody that lives here goes and sits on the beach for hours, but I do in the summer. And I, I moved to the city because of our police department, and I am sick and tired of hearing people say, well, our police department's a joke, and, oh, pull your beer back out as soon as they're gone, or nobody's on duty, you're okay. Because you know what? This is a small city, and I moved here because it was strict, and now we're not. And that's how things start loosening up is one little bit at a time, and I really do think we need to tighten things up.
Yep, and, and that's, that's exactly what I'm suggesting, is go with the police committee. And the, the chief definitely has to be a part of this conversation.
Yeah, oh, a hundred percent.
Yeah, I think that's our, our plan of action. Anything else?
No.
All right. Counselor Perry?
I'm good, thank you.
All right. Freedom Festival, you got that?
Um, no, um, yes, all right, now, Mr. Mayor. Um, actually, I'd like to just talk to you.
Yeah. It's still, uh, we still, we need.
I'm not doing the Freedom Festival, by the way, but I, I still want to talk to you, actually. Chris Bichette, I'm, I'm talking her into it.
We're.
She's, she's going back and forth. Diana, you be quiet.
So, but I'll just publicly announce that we do need some people for the.
We do need people though, because, um, I've organized it for three years, even though the one was canceled. And it was not Joy who canceled it. It was a collaboration of the fire department and the safety for the residents in twenty-three. Um, but I think that my crew did a heck of a job in twenty, whatever I did it in last year, so.
Yeah.
You did.
They did an awesome job.
But we'd like to retire.
We have some awesome people in this community. I know the white persons out there. Counselor Boselberg?
I have nothing.
Counselor Skatulski?
I just have a question, um, in lieu of the, the fact that we've, we've already had two treasurers, um, hired and have not stayed for a very long time. Is there any way to put any kind of commitment on the position that they'll stay for a certain amount?
It's at will.
It's at will.
Yeah, it's kind of an at will. If we do a contract, then we gotta pay them.
It's just we pay so much for the training and everything, and then they're gone.
How much do you pay for the training?
Well, Dee trained them because.
So it's Dee's wages?
Yeah, it was her wages.
So you're not sending them?
No, no.
But we pay someone to train them.
But we, didn't we send Kelly to some retreat or, uh, something?
She was gonna go, but she.
Oh, she didn't go?
Right.
And I don't know if Amber went to any training or not. No, she wasn't here long enough.
She was here, yeah.
Right, I think this one is just, it's hard to foresee that somebody, uh, a headhunter came in and saw her past experience and made a, an offer that.
I know, I'm just saying it's, it's twice now, so we're like.
Yes, oh, yeah.
Third time's a charm, right?
Yes. Uh, good, good input, but, yeah.
I do have one other thing. Um, DPW's been putting up Christmas decorations. Um, they are very old. They're doing their best. But I think DDA and Parks and Rec, and maybe everyone should keep in mind, we may need to start replacing some things.
Well, Hobby Lobby has got Christmas stuff that people sent off. I went there and spent way too much money already.
I really don't think Hobby Lobby stuff is gonna last twenty years.
They have, they have some big old stuff. I was looking at some of that's, yeah, but some of our stuff you can't even plug in, so.
Commercial is in a whole new league.
But they're doing their best to keep it going, but it's, it's getting pretty poor. And maybe when we get the new lighting, we may want to.
They, they don't.
We'll go with Hobby Lobby.
They, you cannot buy any of the light bulbs on there. Yeah, they're obsolete.
Right, that's what I'm saying. They're doing their best, but the time is coming. They're gonna need replacement.
We lose, we lose decorations every, every time a light bulb burns out.
For sure.
So it is, it is, and maybe we can, uh, consider that. It, it is a big expense. I can't, I'm just about fall over when I see what it costs for decoration, for municipal decorations.
We have big old yard stuff that'll fit right on our lights.
Yeah, but it won't last. We've done that before. Uh, Dewey.
Shout out to Hobby Lobby, I guess.
Just saying.
Moving on.
I hate that freaking store.
I'm all set, Mayor.
We, you saw the Bobby Staff Certificate of Liability that I forwarded to our insurance company, so the Turkey Trot.
Good.
November thirtieth is ago. Bingo Feather Party Saturday, November twenty-second. We encourage everyone to attend. If somebody would like to help, there's openings there too. City Hall closed Thanksgiving Day and the day after Thanksgiving, November twenty-seventh and twenty-eighth. Turkey Trot is November thirtieth. Moving on to future meeting dates, the Parks Rec, uh, meeting was canceled, it's December ninth.
So the next one's January thirteenth.
January thirteenth. Thank you. Flooding Erosion, November nineteenth. I'm not sure if that's gonna go on. There's not a lot to do in the wintertime. Planning, uh, Tuesday, November twenty-fifth, six P M. at Water Tower Park. So far, that is ago. DDA, Tuesday, November twenty-fifth, seven P M. Luna Pier Lighthouse. Again, close to Thanksgiving, but. City Council Meeting, November twenty-seventh, seven P M. Water Tower Park. Now, that is very close to Thanksgiving.
That's my birthday.
I, I'm not gonna cancel that meeting. It, it, we're not gonna meet on Thanksgiving, I'll say that. There are some other things going on. We may change the date of that.
I will not be in attendance on the twenty-seventh, sorry.
Neither will I. But there are some, there are some, uh, business we may have to address, and we will change the date. But I don't have a firm date for when that will happen, so it probably won't be the twenty-seventh, but stay tuned. City Council, Thursday, December eleventh, seven P M. here at Water Tower Park. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I make the motion to adjourn.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close? Meeting adjourned.
So. Nice way. I will not be there.
That's nice. I like that.